He walked around, found the same spot. And like I said, he was, he said fifteen, twenty feet, came by with happy hours of minutes. Can't beat that. Hopefully he doesn't have to go two feet. Instead of get the volume, you know.
Yeah, all right.
I asked him if I could see it all, okay, if I could, if I could see it on the side, if I could. Either I can't. That'll be then.
It's five, it's, I'm here, it's five. My book is five. Next time, tell your town board to tell them that you want to see your five in the third. You said five, it's five, it's his fault. I actually need for chop suey. Did you ask for chop suey?
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Calling the meeting to order today, Monday, October fourth, twenty twenty one. We have roll call, Slightman Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, myself, Jamie Thurlow. We have town clerk, Katie Dandiran, town manager, Jesse Dunbar, and town attorney, James Collier.
Here, a little late.
Um, yeah. Kevin has called in and said that he cannot make it this evening.
I'll make a motion to excuse Kevin Buck from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Kevin from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Um, adoption of agenda, is there anything anybody would like to change? And public hearing, um, we have two items that are on for the town meeting on November second, twenty twenty one. Um, we'll start, I think we probably should just do two separate, um, open and then close again. We'll start with the question one, which is the site plan review ordinance amendment. Do you wanna put a time on that, Jesse?
For how long?
No, as to when we go into it. So, open it, yes.
Yep.
All right. Do you need a motion, everyone? Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearings to discuss question one. Site plan review ordinance amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded into to go into public hearing on question one, site plan review ordinance amendment. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Now then. Is there any comments that anyone has? Yes, Greg.
I'd just be curious, um, what was the timeframe for those amendments to the ordinance to start, when were they initiated?
Just.
Yep, they were initiated back in early twenty twenty one.
I noticed they're on the June twenty second agenda. I didn't know prior, I was kinda wondering if we could get a little bit of background on the initiation of those changes that might help some of us understand this.
Yep, the changes were initially proposed, um, back in the February, March timeframe. And they were put on, um, they were put on the town meeting, warranted by the select ward for the May town meeting. Uh, however, just before the meeting, we realized that the select ward failed to have a public hearing, which is a part of the requirement of site plan review ordinance for amending this ordinance. So it was pulled from town meeting and now it's back exactly as it was in May.
Thanks.
James.
And I, I wanted to say that in regard, not in regard to Congress, but what's in the, they mostly are technical, oops, turn around. Technical changes to the ordinance to align the site plan review ordinance with the land use ordinance. And reviewing the pointy head campground, it was noted by Andy or Ed Bear, one of the, one of the Ed Bear, one of the Bangor lawyers, y'all look same to me. Uh, that if the applications had been reviewed under the, uh, land use ordinance or the site plan review ordinance, but not the other one, one or the other. And then I was shocked to learn that they weren't synchronistic. So they're not synchronistic, so the planning board asked me to try to make them more synchronistic, so I did. For the most part, the only items that stand out to me are, some of the definitions were in conflict. And then the terms building versus structure. I mean, you think building and structure are the same thing, but that can speak to it. So I went through and I changed everything to try to make the two of them work synchronistically. The, the land use ordinance and the site plan review ordinance. Site plan is done in many towns as part of the land use ordinance. Big applications go through a site plan review. And it's very inside of the land use ordinance instead of outside of it. So it was strange to me that it was outside. So this is really, although there's a lot of changes, it's a highly technical thing, is all it is, to make the ordinance just works more.
James, do you recall any performance standards, um, related to transit accommodations that may have been changed through the same process?
Well, as you know, that's Greg, I don't remember any. You know, but not so sure. No, I don't really, like you said, the only ones I remember, definitions, building versus structure. But I don't remember anything like that. It was never intended to do anything substantive or substantive. One of our partners used to say substantive. So it was always intended to technical changes. So it's the word, you have to ask a member of the planning board. I was my memory, but I didn't see any planning board members, but with the mask, I think the planning board members here. Mark usually shows up. With the mask on, it's kinda hard to tell. You remember?
Not.
I remember like that.
No, not in second.
No.
I guess what I, I just wanted to maybe point out for, for going on, that under the transit accommodations, the requirement for parking, um, including cottages and campgrounds, in this track, you know, changes in the land use ordinance stuff. I mean, it just increases the amount of parking required for campgrounds, which is a little bit more than just technical changes. But I would like to point out that those changes that made it to this ordinance, um, this vote, went through a normal process of public hearing, um, board approvals, and public input. And, and it went through a normal process of review. No, um, I would say new term urgency, you know.
But, hey, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think the only reason that was, was I think the two ordinancees were in conflict. I didn't think there was a thought that we're gonna change this for this or something. It was just a, we wanted to make the two of them match. So we had to go with one or the other. It wasn't like, well, shouldn't he park in spaces that we had, let's think about it, let's address it, it was more like, the two of them should match. So again, my point about technical changes.
Hey, does that answer your question, Greg? Is there anything else anyone would like to have answered on the first topic? Okay. All right, I think we can close, uh, the public hearing on the first thing, which is the, uh, site plan review ordinance amendment. You got a time on that, Katie?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Next is, uh, for public hearing is the twenty twenty one campground moratorium ordinance.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for question number two, twenty twenty one campground moratorium ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into public hearing on question two, which is the twenty twenty one campground moratorium ordinance. Discussion, I can say. Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Anybody like to speak?
Is this on existing campgrounds?
No, hang, um, sorry, there was someone, please raise your hand. No, and then, uh, if you could please state your name, just so we can tell, it's hard with masks and everything before you speak, okay?
Yeah, David Lawson.
Yep.
Residence, Tremont. Uh, is this on ongoing campgrounds that are already being, that possibly have been built, or future campgrounds? If they come into play?
I would ask our town attorney to answer that question.
Honestly, I was, I, I literally have been spending all day studying that. And the, the answer is, the ones that are already being built, if they've been approved, and if enough time has gone by, and they've like, month and a half, then they're approved, they're not appealed, and they're being built, you can't stop those. But I think any that are not approved yet, they get stopped for now. That's a little controversial, but I think that's what the law says. So in regard to any of that might be going on. Is that pointy head one still underway? It was applied to pointy head, no, one of the Kellytown, whatever. They get stopped.
Those are stopped?
For now. Not stopped, stopped, just under needed days.
Does that seem fair? I mean, they're already ongoing, they're already.
Fair as being as you don't win the cup last, last year, you know? I'm a much older old man, so that's fair, you know, who's look fair?
People already got time, money, and things invested in this, and wanna go vote. So what do you mean by the moratorium, they have to solely cease everything they're doing?
James, I think he's asking you, sorry.
If they received prior approval, like the current Decatur Wilderness Yurts on Kellytown that are under construction, that would not be stopped, because it received approval through the town back in twenty nineteen. He's saying anything that's approved after or yet to be approved would potentially be stopped.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't know you were asking me, I, in fact, my answer is the, um, there's a moratorium, if you look at the wording of the, the thing, it's pretty clear, right? Pending things, and you know, so, fair, technically speaking, I don't know of worry about in, um, the law says on there, in, let's see there, H, section two, I think the glass is on, I fogged up, and if I don't, don't get it in. Section two, uh, sub C. See, it's in check. It says, notwithstanding the provisions of one MRS three oh two or any other law or contrary, regardless of effective date. So this, uh, show government apply all proceedings and applications for campgrounds that were or are pending before the town honor it at any time after August second, twenty twenty one. So what I can tell you is that in two thousand four, there was a case called Kidderie Retail Ventures. And in that, they talked about deciding a retroactive pair, they went back a whole year. They went back from September to September, a whole year, and said anything that was pending. So the, the section of the law cited here is one MRS three oh two, which is another section that talks about constitutionality and due process, and it says, if you've got substantive review, that is one night's review, and some, something was found incomplete, then it's pending. And then, the law under which it is reviewed is that law that exists when you have substantive review and it's not complete. However, in the, the Kidderie case and other subsequent cases that have not overturned that, the law court said that you could make something effective against something that was already pending. Is it fair? I'm not paid to answer those questions personally. None is fair, but it's the law, right? But like I said, there's a lot of things that are unfair that are the law. So I could tell you that there's an answer for that. Again, I don't know of worry with the technicalities, but it's technical jurisdiction in square of court. If you don't think it's fair, you go into court and you make some argument. The leading cases are probably the City Law Department versus Degossier, or golf courses guy named Degossier. There are other cases as well, that try, and they say, well, it's not fair, or in legal terms, we would call it equitable, to do this to me. And then there's a case you can make with under equitable rules. So that's how you get around that. Those cases are sort of lost chance in the hot place, you know? Difficult to make. Very difficult to make. Another argument that you could make would be discrimination, persecution. That's another one that often comes up. So what people do is, uh, they come in to apply for something and town doesn't like it. So they change the law. And then they apply for something else, they say, yeah, the town changed the law again. Oh, it's for what, they said, these were being picked on, were, were applying to just us. So I was here being serious, I said this afternoon, I was reading through some of those cases. And again, it's very difficult to make a case about that too. Uh, the leading case, I probably get, uh, anti games as well, was Ed Bear. Was down in town in Washington, he went down there, Route two twenty. A nice little town, the off the seventeen. Uh, lane construction, they wanted to build a batch plant, so they'd help to pave Route seventeen. And then two or three cases went to the law court, and they appealed, they argued for years. And the, uh, the town of Washington, the county of town, they changed the law. You know, I don't know what it said, probably something like no batch plants, you know? And then the, the, the lady trucks, he said, well, that's not fair, that's not fair. That's inequitable, because it's directed against us specifically. Which it was, there were no other batch plants in there. Oh, don't call me a batch plant, I'm sure, but a part of the process of what they were doing. They were the only ones in town doing that. And the court said, no, no, that's, that's fair, equitable. So those are the answers to equitable, you make two claims about it. As far as we're concerned here at this level, I think the ordinance is legal, it's well written. For example, if you wanna pull in how to write one of these things. And, uh, if it gets thrown over there, everything stops.
Okay, there was someone in the back with the hand up first.
Uh, yeah, Steve Lawson, uh, Tremont resident. Um, has the, uh, I just wanted to clarify, Kate, had the idea of the, uh, of a campground moratorium been placed before the select board before?
Yes, it has.
Is it there twice?
Yes.
Twice, so, I guess my comment to that would be, the injustice there, and it's, uh, this brings it for, uh, before voters, which is how decisions should be made.
Okay. Greg.
I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Collier, um, the gentleman back here had a, a question. I read under section two B in the moratorium that's going to be accepted, it says, for the duration of the moratorium, and as it may be extended, it permitted by law, campgrounds are prohibited to use in the residential business zone. So, if you have a campground, and I'm not saying any proposed ones, but if there is a campground in a residential business zone, it would be nonconforming during the duration of this project by that statement, am I incorrect in that interpretation? That you would not, if you have the same campground, and you wanted to get a better vending machine, a, a better code compliant bathroom, um, but the use is prohibited. You have to be applying under nonconforming use in the ordinance, which we upheld battle. So it's, it's not fair to say that it is only projected to, uh, retroactivity or future ones. It says that it's prohibited use, and once you become a prohibited use in a district, there's an umbrella of all kinds of things, Mr. Collier. Am I misinterpreting that, Mr. Collier?
No, I think you're as per usual, you're right on.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, attorney, yes.
Um, hi, uh, my name's Ann Cass, well, I'm in Silco. And I'm just looking at the little saying up there. Society grows great when old folks plant trees. In new shade, they will never sick. I guess I'm one of those old folks these days. Um, I can't see the harm in pressing a pause button when there's been so much kind of turmoil around, um, questions of development. And I just answered, I think, most of us have probably answered a long survey about how we see the town's future. And how, how often do we do those comprehensive surveys?
Jesse, how often does the comprehensive surveys come out?
Ten.
Ten years?
Twenty years.
Yeah, ten.
Yeah, and it just seems to me that while we're in the middle of that process, what's wrong with being a pause button, clarifying the situation, having a discussion about how we wanna see the town's future, and then proceed after that? It takes a lot of steps, I mean, just go down and take this process as, as it comes.
Yes.
When did you last see us, the rings done?
Uh, two thousand eleven. Is there anything, anybody else like to add? Oh, yes.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Wagner, I'm in Silco Pottery and Art Gallery, I'm one of the owners, um, on Kellytown Road. And since this has started and, um, the whole process of campgrounds, all the property along Kellytown, from information I've gathered, people are looking at it as, can I put a campground in here? Someone with a house and, you know, a couple of acres is looking to make some money off of it, which, you know, they don't blame them. But it can and will lead to kind of willy nilly development of an area that historically has struggled with, is a business, is a residential. That end of Kellytown Road, if you go down all those little roads, if you look at your, uh, tax maps, it's tons of residential properties. And then this possible campground stuck right in the middle of it. And that's going to bring in a lot of traffic. Um, and it could be in any other part of Tremont. And if you look at the tax map, where, this is.
Right behind you.
Everything with that teepee color could be campgrounds. Everybody in that area, which is most of Tremont, unless you live on water, if you got a lot of money, um, is susceptible to having campgrounds put in. So you really have to think about what do we want for a community? And it's not just one campground. It's not just one business. It's what do we, as Tremont, for me, a business owner, want the community to develop? Um, many of us that work in the area, we really rely on the summer residential people. And they are our big income, they pay tons of taxes, they pay way more than any of our campgrounds pay that exist. They pay more than citizens pays. Um, we really need to develop the community in a way that enhances the property, the value, the tax base. And I think we really need to pause. And then this pause that the moratorium gives us will give us a chance of, who do we wanna be as a community? Where do we wanna raise children? Um, how do we make sure that our schools, our library was donated to us by one of the rich people? Um, and we really need to decide how we conduct ourselves. So that's why I think we need a moratorium. Thank you.
Yes. Um, yes, you first, and then you may have that.
What do we have to do to get, um, all those surveys done? Ten years ago, I was in high school, I have kids, I got kids now. I'd like them to be able to ride their bikes from one place to another, like I did. If we have too many people around here, we have to come in and out here, like we did. We've got a whole amount of generation that can be on that survey, wanting to raise our kids the way we were raised.
I believe there's one right now that's in adjusting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the deadline? Yeah. What's the deadline for the ser- current survey?
It was September thirtieth.
Thirtieth, oh.
All right, um, there's a few next.
So, one of the things that I think is interesting is the idea that, um, a pause is threatening, that taking time to think about something is upsetting to people. Because it's not deciding to do something, it's deciding to think about something. And, um, just deciding to think about something isn't, isn't taking an action. So I think it's, it's frustrating to me that deciding to think about something is threatening to people. Um, thinking about something and taking your time with something should be a good thing. Um, also, I think it's interesting that we're only making these decisions every ten years. Because, for example, I didn't own a home here ten years ago. I was someone who came to visit here, but I wasn't someone who owned a home here. And so, right now, I'm a homeowner, and this, you know, the campground proposal is upsetting to me. But a year, but ten years ago, it would have been upsetting to me as a visitor, but it wouldn't have been as a homeowner. But ten years from now, it will, some other proposal may be upsetting to a whole, a, a other set of people. Um, so, what I think about is that in ten years, it'll be different for a whole new generation of people. And so, I think about the fact that not only should we be thinking about ourselves, we should also be thinking about our children. So, if I think about what you're saying, is that we should have a whole set of children and young people on a committee, thinking about what they want this community to look like. Um, and an educator, and we have panels, for example, um, we're thinking about the American Rescue Plan. The, um, the brands that are out right now for school systems. And that brand requires us to have community members, parents, um, students, and families all involved in how we spend the money for the school districts. I think that a comprehensive plan for a plan for a community should have the students who are gonna be the families, who are gonna be the taxpayers, involved in what a land use ordinance should look like. Because they're gonna be the people who have children here. And what can be the threat about taking a pause to get the students, to get the thoughtful students at the high schools, at the middle schools, and ask them, what kind of community do you want to live in? You know, when I think about, for example, the fact that they're doing a superintendent search, and that they're asking students, what kind of superintendent do you want? Why aren't we asking students what kind of community you want? I would like the superintendent who's about to come in to be someone who is asked, what kind of interests, um, does the backside have in the superintendent search? Does the superintendent ever have been someone who knows a lot about the backside? I hope so. Um, I hope that those interests are represented. I would like kids from the backside to be interested in what happens here in this community. And so, it's not just us, it's not just people from ten years ago who should have decided what land use is. It's our kids who should decide how they want this community to be used. And so, I'm just really interested in why people are so threatened by us taking a pause. It's just taking some time for thoughtful people to think, why is that upsetting? Let's just take some time and talk about it, because when we talk about it, everyone involved with thoughtful people on both sides of the issue can just talk about it. And we don't know what the result will be, it's just saving time. And if we're doing it thoughtfully, and we're doing it in a reasonable way, then we don't know what the result is. We're just doing it in a reasonable way with both sides coming to the table. And that doesn't seem like a threatening thing to me.
Um, yes, and can you please make sure that you state your name before? I, I know we were doing well with it, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First, yeah.
I'm from Rattles, and I live at eighteen Kellytown.
Okay, thank you.
Becky Hoffman. My son's the, uh, the one that has the, um, campground pending. I think it's very interesting that you talk about how wonderful it would be that we all talk together, and we all talk about the children that wanna come back.
and we all talk about the children that want to come back and raise their families. That's my son. He wants to come back and raise his family. He wants to make a living. And you talk about going to the schools. Well, ten years ago, it's one years ago, kids were told, oh, don't go away to college, but come back. Come back and do a business. Come back and put your thoughts and the love of your community back in from what we have given you as an education. That isn't true. My son's trying to come home and a group of people have decided that they don't want him to come home. And you talk about, you can laugh and you can say, oh, what's the wrong with pausing? Well, and that we can both sit together and talk about it. Well, I'll show you how thoughtful things are. These are letters, threatening letters that are threatening my children and my grandchildren. This is what thoughtfulness, this route has come out with. It is stated in here that if we continue with the campground or any other project, there will not be goodwill shown to my children or my grandchildren. So I do not call this thoughtfulness. And I don't call this sitting together and talking about a project. We sat down with everyone in this town on a Zoom meeting, a hundred people, and we listened. And we changed the campground, it was a hundred and seventy sites, to fifty-five. We've been told that if we would put in affordable housing on our forty-two acres, that that would be wonderful. It's stated in here, we'd be heroes in this town. Isn't that wonderful? But in reality, it's not. It is not what everyone wants. If you don't like a project, a group of people get together and they have a moratorium and they stop you. And you take a hundred and eighty days with a lot of money invested in something, life savings, so that you can come home, you don't have eight hundred and eighty days. I'm sorry, it's not a pause. It's financial ruin, is what it is. My children have been threatened. My family has been traumatized. And I have never, ever, ever thought that the town that I lived in would ever do that to us. I worked in school for twenty years. I fought for children. I advocated for children. I can't imagine that people are going to turn their backs on my child and not let it come home. It's not goodwill. It's not what we're talking about. Forty-two, the numbers don't work. You have a moratorium here that says it's an emergency on the police, it's an emergency on the water systems and the drainage and the sewer. That's not true. If I put forty-two duplexes on that property, if I flip on it, that's eighty-four families drawing on the aqua draw and the drainage and the sewer system, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But if I put a campground in, that's fifty-five. There is six months out of the year and less people than what you're putting in for affordable housing. I think affordable housing is wonderful. But every one of us in this room has learned. Has anyone else offered up ten acres for affordable housing? Has anyone else said, oh, I'll give up an acre and put a duplex on it so that affordable housing can happen in Tremont? No, they haven't. But those threatening letters have made us just start and think, why? Why? A moratorium is not about a campground. It's about stopping the family, coming back home to live with the community he grew up in. A community he wants to raise his children in that you talked about is, oh, it's a wonderful place to be. My kids don't know. They won't have the opportunity to do that because my son can't get a living back here. And I just don't think that's fair. I don't think that anyone or any group of people should be intimidated, bullying is unacceptable for any reason, for anything. And what should be a fair and equitable process in this town is now biased and personal. And that's just not fair. Why do you bother to have, Slatman, why do you bother to have a planning board? My son has jumped through every hoop. He has followed every rule in the book, every ordinance he has checked, marked off. But yes, when you follow the rules and you do everything that's been asked of you, a group of people can get together, throw some money in the hat, and destroy you. That's intimidation, it's bullying, and it should never be allowed in this town. Because once you give the power away, you don't have a time to go.
Yes.
So I was told by my wife, the public health director, it's okay to take a mask off, to smile at people, and then get your mask back on. So I'm smiling, my name's Andrew Hamilton, I'm an attorney at Peabody. And I do represent the Hopkins family. Rebecca just spoke. And James and Kenya Hopkins have worked hard on this project. And it's been two really neat phases, the first proposal and then the comeback. And I just want to offer two brief comments. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comments and retroactive moratorium. To no one's surprise, my client, the Hopkins, and their family opposed this special interest effort to stop their campground project. As my two colleagues, Greg Johnston and Cynthia Orbit, know, because we've worked hard with the Hopkins, we have a pending campground project which has been thoughtfully planned and designed. We proactively engaged our neighbors and community to get input on our project. We did this by choice. From that outreach, we modified and I would say very much improved the campground project. This included completely eliminating RDs and greatly reducing the number of campsites by over three hundred percent. We went from one fifty-five down to fifty-four. This moratorium signals to residents of Tremont that if you engage with the community over months and reduce the scale to better adapt the project, you run the risk of a moratorium erasing everything you've worked for. And instead, this moratorium encourages property owners to rush through projects without community input or engagement in the hopes of getting final approval before a retroactive moratorium stops their rights and their trust. So I would propose to this town that it's time for a Peabody. Not a Boston Peabody, not a Washington DC Peabody, but a Tremont waterfront Peabody. Why? Because the British decided that it was okay to impose their law on the Patriots and the Patriots said, no more. No more. So unfortunately, it's not surprising that opponents decided to go to the retroactive moratorium route as the last ditch pitch out at the stump, the Hopkins project and its track. I suspect this is because they know the project meets the ordinance standards of the town. Their efforts have been to keep the project from being reviewed by the planning board on merit. We believe for this reason it's important for the planning board to stay with a reasonably prompt and efficient review time for this project. It's noteworthy that a campground moratorium idea has been presented at least twice in the last nine months. On both occasions, the select board saw no need for a moratorium. Whether due to any certain serious public harm or undue burden on public facilities, that wasn't an issue at that time. And that was when we were looking at a hundred and fifty-five site campground. We're now looking at a fifty-five campground site with no RDs sites. And the drafters of the moratorium knew that when they presented it on July twenty-seventh, they knew that. On both occasions, the select board has said previously, no need for a moratorium. And again, that was before the Hopkins project was updated to remove RDs and scale back to one hundred and three hundred percent. Further, the luau has already been amended in May twenty-twenty-one to address campgrounds. And you'll note during the comment period on the land use changes to conform the two ordinances so they talk to each other. Greg Johnston asked questions for clarification, but he did not oppose those land use ordinance changes. But make no mistake, if this moratorium is adopted in this community, there will be a proposal close on to it that will shut down an opportunity for economic, opportunity for the Hopkins and those who use the campground. Again, the luau has already been amended in May twenty-twenty-one to address campgrounds. The town's planning board went through that process and the voter approved those amendments. The planning board was invited to look at the possibility of a moratorium. The select board asked the planning board to do that. They did that, they brought it forward and there was a discussion and it was decided the moratorium was not needed. This community has worked with all projects, doesn't matter which side of the town you're on, used the review process.
This is an attorney's meeting or a plea session?
No other campground projects have been proposed in town since the select board rejected the fire moratorium request and since the May twenty-twenty-one land use ordinance amendment. There is simply no reason for this moratorium other than attempts to deny the Hopkins an opportunity to have the town completed subsequent review of their project on merit. And yes, I am, I'm an attorney. I'm here to defend the rights of my clients before they take away by a positive vote on this moratorium. We encourage everyone to understand this moratorium is not a homegrown effort. This is not coming from the planning board. This is not coming from within your community. This is coming from a court of attorney who is commissioned by individuals that want to deny the Hopkins family from getting a fair opportunity to get a campground project approved.
Can you please, can we please let one person finish speaking? Everybody will have their chance, please be respectful of each person that's speaking.
I'm almost done, I'll wrap up. My client has committed a large amount of resources in planning to do their campground project. It is an opportunity for them to come home and raise their family. For all of you listening, and we know that there are many people beyond these walls who may hear this message, please join us in voting down the retroactive moratorium seeks to hijack the town's traditional planning process by special interests and does so by targeting property that's a people in Tremont. It's time for Tremont Waterfront Peabody and tell the special interests no. Please join the Hopkins family in voting no on the retroactive moratorium this November two. Note that this is not a legal argument, this is a parents' argument. It's not fair to do this to somebody who did the right thing in the planning process and then gets hit with this on July twenty-seventh. That's the date that Ms. Charles' letter was presented to this town proposing this specific moratorium. And for those who say, just take a pause, let me just read a section of the moratorium tweet if you were so deeply involved in the preparation of this moratorium. In my thirty-five years of land use practice, I've never seen this kind of provision. It does take action, it does make sense, it says it follows. Any provision of the town's ordinance that allows campground use in the residential business zone or otherwise inconsistent with or conflicting with the provisions of this campground moratorium ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent that they are applicable. The duration of the moratorium hereby revens. And as it may be extended, is permitted by law, but not otherwise. For the duration of this moratorium, as it may be extended, is permitted by law, campgrounds are prohibited use in the residential business zone. Further, usually under name law, when we take a pause, we do it for six months, in only six months. Note that this moratorium will affect the project pending as of August two. That's the eighth month of the year. And it will apply for six months from the November two adoption. So six months plus August, September, October, November, as I count it, that's roughly ten months. This is a very scary moratorium as a precedent. If this community wants this kind of planning, I'd recommend that folks take a deeper look at what this community's proposing. I don't think there's support on this. And I think it's because a few people didn't like the fact that the project now meets the ordinance review standards and they wanted to stop the project. Thank you.
First, it'd be all the way in the back and then you next.
Thank you. In response to Ms. Hopkins, I would just like to say a couple of things. One of them, since she was looking directly at me, was that I'm her neighbor. And she's known each other as neighbors for several years since I moved there. And I walk by her house and we've always been friendly, walking by, I walk by her house with my dog. And before I ever even knew about this campground, we've always been friendly. And so, there was many of an opportunity to, for her and her family to come to the neighbors and suggest that this campground was a possibility. There was many of an opportunity for people to come to the neighbors and say, hey, we're thinking about doing this. That never happened. Also, they own the property that this campground is being built on, where there is a house. So to say that her family is being prevented from moving here and raise their children here is not true. There, no one's preventing them from moving here. No one's preventing them from having a life here. I moved here when my family's livelihood collapsed in Florida, ten years ago. We had no money. We moved up here, we found a rental, we found a way to start, we worked our way up, we found a loan, we eventually found a way to buy a house. It's possible. They have a home here, they have family here. There's a way for them, they obviously own the property. No one is preventing them, they're lovely people. I spoke with Kenya, we talked this summer. No one is preventing them. They have family here, we would love them to move here and start their family here. To say that we are stopping them from being here and being part of this community is not fair. I don't know who sent you those threatening messages. I know that me and my family and all the people here that I know would never do that. I'm so sorry that's happened. And for you to look at me and in any way imply that I would do that, that's not the community I want to live in, it's not the community my family would ever be a part of and that breaks my heart, honestly. I talk to your husband every day, your husband talks to my husband, her neighbors. So that is not something that I would ever abide by or anyone I know would abide by. That's the first piece. Your family would be a part of my family. So that is just not ingenuous to say that you could not be a part of this community or mortgage your family. We raised. The second piece is that it doesn't make sense that you couldn't have, or your children couldn't have, come to everyone on Kellytown Road and talked about how their business that was being proposed could become a part of the fabric of this community. But that's not how it happened. It got dumped as a surprise. And so, it was a shock. And that is not a good way for people to find out about things like this. And it didn't get brought in as a gentle plan, as it has become, as you say. It got dumped as a gigantic RV, lights blaring, things coming in, huge project in our backyards. So it's not fair to say, we scaled down. We did this to make you happy. We had a conversation. You had a conversation after you got pushed, feeling like you might lose everything. So please don't act like you made all the necessary effort. You made the effort when you thought you would lose it all, when you were pushed. Not from the beginning, when you thought, let me be neighborly. It's when you were forced. It could have started a different way. It's just, I wanted to be clear that from years ago, we have been very neighborly and there was a different way this could have started. And I would never, ever, ever want to say that I would abide by any of those threats and I'm so sorry that it's happened to you because that's not something I would ever be a part of nor anyone I know here would ever want your family to be spared that way.
Okay, I have to go to the lady in the back and then you can go next.
My name is Betsy Minnick, I am a resident of Tremont, I live on the Lushland Road. And I am just curious to know, I'm sorry, can you say your name again, the lawyer from the Peabody? What's your name?
That's me, Andrew Hamilton.
Andrew Hamilton, that's a good name.
Not related, I wish I had one.
I, I'm curious in what you said, you mentioned special interest groups. And to me, that is a hot button term that smacks of like scary dark outside money coming to make something happen that somehow all of us who live here are oblivious to. And as someone who lives here, I think all of us have special interests. We live here, we chose to live here. But I'm curious to know why that term is used and what the perception is of this special interest group. Because I'm pretty sure the only people who are going to be able to vote on this are people who are residents of this town and live here long enough during the year to be residents of this town and can vote. And I take offense to the term special interest group. I have a person who lives here, tries to make a living here, it is not easy. I'm a landscaper. I work many different jobs, I work long hours. And I think everyone, I don't know most of you, I know a few faces. I think everyone is trying to make a living. Everyone is trying to make a place for family. And a lot of us depend on the people from away who do come here. But it seems like there's got to be a balance because I don't know about you, who knows how this world is going to continue to unfold, what with. Who knows how this world is going to continue to unfold, what with pandemics and warming oceans and lobster fisheries changing and all the things that traditionally people made a living off of? But trying to get on and off the island this year, going through the IDA, which is the only place right now that you can go to get food and finding that their entire section is empty, um, it just strikes me that these are all part of the conversation we have to have. And, and I'm just curious to know, the, I, yeah, I guess my big question is, who's the special interest group? And then there's all these other things that, that come to mind about how, how this, how can this island support? How much can this island support before the infrastructure is unable to take it? Like, there are so many, like, people who are... Okay, there's a lot of good questions. I'll, I'll be quiet now, but I, it's especially interesting that I'm on your side.
Sure, sure. So, um, in the thirty-five years I've practiced, I've seen probably fifty land use reviews. I think I've seen three moratoriums. Okay? So moratorium is an exceptional remedy. And when I said special interests, I mean those interests who may not have been participating in the land use review process, because if you had, you would have seen a pretty remarkable shift in the project from what it was initially to where it is now. But without any opportunity to complete the balancing, the very balancing that you're suggesting of what's the impact with the traffic that might be brought to the island by this proposal? This is a curtain comes down and says, nope, you can't talk in. The planning board cannot process a permit application, right James? That the moratorium is, is approved, that they, they can't process the permit application. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's what I understood.
Yep. And then the second thing it does is it repeals ordinances that this, it repeals ordinances that this community has adopted. It says, once this moratorium is approved, those ordinances are repealed, gone. So it's basically saying no conversation, no conversation.
Please let him finish.
And, and no opportunity to act on laws that would have allowed the project discussions to continue. And so I typically find that a moratorium is a tool that is used when people conclude they don't want balancing, they just want no as an answer. No project. And I don't think that's enlightened. I don't think that's balancing. And I certainly don't think that's just a pause. In my experience, a moratorium is a first step towards a second step. The second step is, we're going to present an ordinance to the community that kills any opportunity for you to do the project. And I have to say, Ken and James Hopkins are some of the best listeners I've seen. You can imagine if they had a business model that went for a larger scale project and they had to scale down the project, that meant a lot of sacrifice. And I think that their mom, that who spoke earlier, is concerned about the fact that people have been somewhat strident, somewhat adamant outside the review process to say, we, we're going to threaten you with, with the way we communicate with you and we're going to threaten you with a moratorium. And that's the way we treat it. We're very anxious about this moratorium, because there's no other project this is directed at. It's just directed at our project.
That's not true.
It is true.
All right, um, Becky, you're next.
This project wasn't dumped on anyone. We went to the town and we asked the CEO at the time. Um, my son has a piece of property in Kellytown. He said, my granddad gave it to me as a gift. I don't want to sell it, but I want to do something with it. I, I want to be able to keep it. So they said, well, you can put a duplex on it or you can put a campground on it. We had not thought of a campground until we were told by the town that we could have one. So the project wasn't dumped on anyone. We went through the process, the postcards go out, you get a chance to come and talk about it. We went through all the right process. When people in town decide to do something with their property, even if they're in my neighborhood, they don't call me and ask me. They don't say, hey, you mind if we put a garage up down the street and we sell cars out of it? Like on the other side of Kellytown? No. No one asks me. I don't know if anyone else got asked. But I wouldn't expect anyone of anybody that has their own property to call me and ask me if it's okay if they do something with their property. It's your property. I don't, I don't understand where that comes from. And we went through and they said the word dumped is not dumped when you set through seven or eight months of hearings and meetings and listening to a hundred people on Zoom. And I think we've listened and I think we've talked to people. And I think we did everything you asked us to do. But even when we did everything you asked us to do, you still want to rip the rug out from underneath and I don't understand it. I, it's just not how the community works. It's not how I feel the community works. Why not be supportive? We were supportive. We took away three quarters of the income that we could have gotten by scaling down two thirds of our project. I think that's a pretty big sacrifice. I think it's a pretty big sacrifice not to clear cut forty-two acres and put in duplexes just to make money, which we can do. Residential, we can do that, but we chose not to. Because nobody wants to look at rows and rows of houses. No one wants to clear cut anything. In fact, what we've designed, you wouldn't even see it. If we had just, if the ability was to just go in and build something, you'd never know it was there. Because you'll never see it with hundred foot setbacks and, and built the way it's supposed to be built and hardly any trees coming down. It's supposed to be really natural. And the letters that everyone said, oh, I, I don't know who would do that. These letters were written from, for you, from all of you. It says, the locals hate your project. And if you, if you, if you move to town, you will not find goodwill and your children will not find goodwill or happiness here. We'll make sure. So it's not like a person wrote it because that was their opinion. It stayed in there. Locals do not like it. So someone out here is writing letters for all of you, to my family. And I would be disappointed if any of you, got letters like I have, would not stand up and defend their family. And we didn't dump anything else, community. I've been here sixty-three years. My son grew up here. He went to school here. We worked in the schools. I advocated for children. I've been in education. There is nothing here that he would want to hurt. He wants his children to come back and grow up in small communities where people take care of each other. And yet, we're being denied that. And you can say, oh, you're not being denied, but yes, you are, because the only way we can come back is to make a living here and to have a business. And I would not deny anyone else's family the opportunity to make a living or move back home. And I'm sorry, but you can twist it any way you want to and you can say what it is, but it wouldn't matter what the budget seems to be with, what, what is, what is the sense for people to follow the law, to follow the rules, to do everything you're asked about, to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to make it right, to make it comfortable for everyone so they can see it's not going to ruin the town or the environment? But it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you follow the rules. It doesn't matter if you do what's right. You still get punished, you get bullied, you get intimidated, and the rug is pulled out from underneath you in a hundred and eighty days, like I said. Could you go without a job for a hundred and eighty days? And if you, could you go without making a living for a hundred and eighty days? You couldn't, it's fine to ruin. You will ruin our family. You will ruin his opportunity to come home by voting for a moratorium. And you might as well get rid of all these people who volunteer at the time, because they're here to make sure that it's in the best interest of the town. But with the moratorium, you've taken it away. You tied their hands. They told you twice, no moratorium for Tremont. We don't think that's right. We think it should be, if they follow the rules, if it's in the ordinance, you should be able to have it. But instead, a group of people signed a petition and now you've tied everyone of their hands. They might as well not have a board anymore, they might as well just go home. Because when someone decides that they don't like lobster traps near you, they don't like boats near you, they don't like you starting your boats before seven AM, you have a petition. Take out a moratorium. Shut them down for a hundred and eighty days. We can shut the whole harbor down. You can't start your boats before seven. Why? Because someone doesn't like it. And that's just not right, I'm sorry. We talk about, we talk about being fair. It's not fair.
Yes, Karen, then you next.
Um, the idea that you're surprised by this is very true, because I was in this room when you proposed the first campground, which by the way, your son does own, to my understanding. So he does have a business and it is fully being built, which I also asked every single morning. So you guys do have a business, fully being built this morning, has it this morning? And so that has been approved and it is happening, so there is a business happening and it's up and running. So that is not true that you don't have a business. So that's another falsehood. But that you are surprised that the neighborhood is upset by this larger campground is surprising to me, because I was in this room when there was a huge group of people, many of whom are here, that were very upset about that campground. And so you got one campground, they defended vociferously, very strongly. A lot of people were upset about it. It passed anyway. And then you took all those people and then went ahead and opened a bigger campground. So for you to say, I'm so surprised that everyone's so upset, is very strange to me. So you can keep standing up and you can keep telling me that you're victimized and that you're bullied and that there's terrible people are out there. And I believe you that there's terrible people out there. And I believe you that you should defend them, because of course you should defend your family and your children and your grandchildren. I would do the same. But those people do not represent me. I know they don't represent almost everyone in here and I'm almost sure that those people who wrote you those are not here, because people who write things like that are cowards and they don't show up in person. They write things like that and they're usually anonymous. I'm just guessing.
No, they weren't anonymous. They're silent and they have to put state...
I bet they're not here. But anyway.
I don't know.
My point is, they don't represent me, for sure. But my point is this, for you to say that you're surprised that people are upset about this huge campground is crazy to me, because almost everyone in here was here when you proposed the small campground. And they were very upset about that one. And now you're proposing a larger one and many of the same person are very, people are very upset about that one. So please don't act like you're surprised about that. And don't say that you're surprised about it and that you're victimized and bullied, because we're upset about it for the very same reasons. And so I'm just going to leave it at that. I'm not going to keep going back and forth. People want to go home to their families. I'm done, but I'm just saying, we're not trying to victimize or bully you. It just, everyone wants to have a quiet backyard. Everybody wants to have their piece of land. Everybody wants your family to be able to come and have a home. But for your family to have a home and a quiet business shouldn't mean that we can't have a home and a quiet peaceful land. That's all we're saying. But that's all I'm saying. I will only speak for myself. I want to be able to come home and have peace in my property, which is all I'll ever be able to afford. And I want my children to be able to have that. And you guys doing what you want to do is going to tell me that. And I wish we could have talked about it first. And that's all I'm saying. And that's all I'm saying. And I need to...
But you made my point. You made my point. You didn't write from the first one went through. And you could see that the second one was going to go through, because we follow the rules. So what you've done is you startled the wagon and you did a moratorium and you tied it in his business and said, nope.
The moratorium has to do with the fact that there is so much poverty that the, the burning needs to be looked at for the whole island. Whether your property goes through or not, we need to think about what this whole island, this whole area wants for the future. It's not just about the good campground. It's about what this whole island wants for the future. Because I know you'd like to think this is about you, but the moratorium is not about you. And it's not just for us to realize what this whole island is going to think about the future.
All right, can we pause? Can we pause for a sec? I don't want to see going back and forth between you. I want people just to state their opinion and, and try to keep this cordial. Um, the next person they handed up was the lady in the back, right there.
Hi, Gabrielle Graham, still quote. Um, I am very sympathetic to you, Ms. Hopkins, and what your family has, um, agreed to exchange, how it downsides. I, I, um, I think this is an example of the good process. However, I think that this moratorium is not, I, I'd like to see, see the more general issue of the moratorium. It's not us against you. I'm horrified that you would give those letters. It's not the town against you. It is what people were saying before about the tax map. And people that can, um, purchase property, I've seen, I've seen advertisements, um, asking for property for people who want to develop it, future campground development. I have not, I, I personally, and, and from what I understand, the people I've talked to are not aiming this moratorium against your son's property. It is because of unlimited growth, undefined growth. It's a matter of taking a pause and determining what do our ordinances mean? What, what are the definitions that we want them to be? Can they be clarified better so that we don't have future less scrupulous developers come in and potentially build campgrounds or other businesses that we don't want on our quiet side?
Yes, you, sir.
My name is Ed Davis. Um, I've lived on Kellytown Road about sixty years. And for a while, I was one of only two families that lived there. So I have a little bit of perspective in this town, having been here this long. And, um, I'd like to say that over the years, I've seen this play out in this town in various meetings. This isn't the first moratorium that's come along, probably won't be the last. But I think the important thing here is really, why is all this happening? And it's because somebody gets a letter in the mail that says, oh, there's a campground being put in my backyard. Oh, what a surprise! And then go down to the town and talk to the, to the person down there who is a code officer and they say, can they do that? Oh, yeah, of course they can. Well, I thought we were protected from that. Oh, no, there's no protection for that. Um, it's not just campgrounds, it's been a lot of other things that's come along over the years. And people have the same reaction when they've suddenly discovered that in their backyard they can have a multitude of things. Uh, things a lot worse than a campground could go in their backyard, the way things are written in this town right now. And, um, so it's kind of a reaction. And then you folks have to deal with it. We have to deal with it and freshen up. And, um, so really, the town at some point has got to decide whether we're going to be reactionary or are we going to plan and talk to the people in town about what they don't want in their backyard, for one thing? I mean, there's a lot of things people don't want. Most people would like peace and quiet. They like a, kind of a normal life that they live, um, you know, without having something in their backyard that's going to keep them up late at night and, you know, cause them trouble. So, um, I think this moratorium can be a very important thing for the town for a discussion with people. There seems to be a lot of people in this town. I know a lot of people here and when I've heard conversations from various people, um, they would like to see something happen so that it doesn't happen in their backyard. Because there are other discussions going on right now about the next campground, not this one, but the next one after that. And there are people right now looking for the possibility of doing it, looking at this project saying, well, if this is successful, I think we can go ahead and do this. And so the town really should take a pause and should listen to its residents about what they want and what they don't want and try to, try to work it out. So it's not always this thing that comes up every fifteen, ten, fifteen years where, I don't want that in my backyard. And then everybody gets all upset and, you know, it's, uh, it's, it seems that this just happens over and over again. I've seen it, I've seen it a number of times in the town. And a, a little better planning would prevent a lot of this problem.
James.
I wanna get in on that note is the, the technical point that, I live in Bar Harbor and I was encouraging the town to do better planning for, I guess I've been, how long have I been there? Twenty, twenty-two years. Um, in coming to Tremont, and campgrounds is one of the things I was kinda surprised, so I just wanna say, I don't care if one way or another, we do the moratorium or don't do the moratorium. But during the last round with the planning board, which was last winter on the Zoom, nobody had any suggestions for fixing campground stuff. So I'm kinda surprised, and then prior to that, I think it was, can't turn Andy, but I think it was Andy and Greg who've all been a, been the same people over there. And I thought that was jammed in pretty hard, pretty close, and I encouraged people then to change the ordinance. Several years ago, there was a lawsuit in Mount Desert, right in the middle. It's the name of the Mount Desert campground, it's called, right in the middle, and those people walking up. I was hired right after that in Mount Desert, about ten years ago now. And the, the, it was a York thing over here years ago, it was a York thing, I was adamant we get because there were structures. In Town Hill, they have a major renovation there, the campground, same as the one at the head of the island, I was involved with a couple in Ellsworth and, uh, in Bar Harbor and, currently, I've been involved with a lot of campgrounds, mainly for developers. I've been encouraging the town for over a decade to have more planning on campgrounds. So I don't wanna have more campgrounds or fewer campgrounds, I don't care, it's not my town, I just want more regulation. Because, and I, and I just wanna encourage everybody, if the moratorium goes in, to participate in the process more. Because there's been a lot of talk about this, and so I don't think you should, if the moratorium goes in, it just shouldn't be the stamp stop anywhere on campground, but to actually get involved. My beef, as many of you know, was the boats, I used to build boats when I did, that you're allowed to have boats in a subdivision, boat, in boat storage in a subdivision, and I thought that was terrible. Because I build boats in fiberglass, and I, I do fiberglass in boats and fixing them in the spring and having fiberglass go in the air and washing your hands with acetone like I used to do, it was appalling to me. But people in this town said, "How do you know? You don't know anything." So I'd encourage you that are all hepped up about this to be involved going forward in the process. Good planning is easy to say. But every time I hear somebody say, "We need more planning, we need good planning," I hear the opposite, which is, "We need to do whatever we want, Tremont." So I encourage you all, you're being involved, kind of.
We definitely want our boats in our backyard.
Yes, you, uh, over here and then you next.
Um, I'm Jen McKenzie, and I think what you just said now is very important because if something had been in place, the Hopkins wouldn't have gone through what they have gone through like they're going through right now. And I think more or less, this is what everyone is kind of saying this evening.
Hi, my name is Cindy Orkin, I'm a landscape architect, a land planner. Um, yes, I have been working with Hopkins since April, I'm, sorry, um, to see that look, I'm sad this one, I get up to talk. Um, but I do know something about land planning, and I've been doing land planning for years and years and years. And this moratorium is really not about land planning, but it's about killing this project. I applaud all of you for wanting to quote unquote, "take a pause to talk to each other." You should do it, you should have a conversation. Look up the Orkin family company, they've got a continuous process of heart and soul for communities to come together to listen to the older people in the community, tell stories about what is important, what matters. These are all really good things, really good processes. Actually, nothing is stopping your community from starting that tomorrow. You should be doing that, you should be doing your surveys, and you should be updating the comprehensive plan. But this moratorium, you're, you're kind of talking about the moratorium and planning in the same rut, and they're two totally different things. This moratorium is specifically designed to stop Acadia Wilderness Lodge. And many of you have said, "We need the pause, we need to take a breath, we need to talk the conversation," which is totally true. You're absolutely right. But then you go on to say it's because we don't want things like this campground happening and saying what it is that is bad about this campground. So the issue here actually is property rights, and the Hopkins do have property rights. And they have been working on this project long and hard. I started with them in April when we began a community project, process of sorts, uh, to meet with the neighbors, to try and understand the concerns, try and address the concerns, and modify the plan. Um, before we began that process, I think there were over seventy letters that were submitted um, in opposition to the project, expressing concern. Uh, the first public hearing, we had over a hundred people there talking about their concerns. And the Hopkins put a pause on that process and said, "Okay, let's go talk to our neighbors." Um, and that is what we did, stopped the planning board process, talked to the neighbors, developed a new plan. Um, that plan has been described tonight as a, as a much, um, smaller plan. It was modified to reduce density, eliminate RVs, eliminate, uh, open campfires. There were all sorts of issues that were raised that were really good issues that I think helped develop a far better plan. Um, and then when that plan was then presented, uh, to the planning board, uh, at that point, we got sixteen letters. So first we got seventy, then we had sixteen, which made the team feel, uh, maybe we've addressed some of the concerns here. Those sixteen letters were very different than the first seventy that we got. The first seventy were really thoughtfully written, they were great letters, they talked about all, all the concerns that they thought were legitimate, good concerns, and as a planner, we were able to deal with them. The second round of letters were really all talking about process and how this should be a new application, that it should be denied, and it was all, it was all kind of legal process and, um, not really talking about the plan itself. And, and of course, this all happened about the same time that the, the concern Tremont residents was formed and then the moratorium was submitted. Um, a lot of the letters actually asked, actually one of them specifically asked the planning board for their help in stopping this project, um, that they really just wanted the project killed. And that's kind of how this moratorium feels. So I guess I would say, um, the, to be fair and to honor a family that you say you want in your neighborhood. It would seem to me that this campground should be allowed to proceed and either be accepted or denied based on the merits, on the criteria and standards that you have. This project is actually not the ones that you passed in May, um, even, even more than, than what the May standards, you know, are set to be. Let's start your comprehensive plan process now, you don't need a moratorium and put this family through this. It's fifty-four campsites, believe me, you are not, I know, actually, you, uh, you are out of luck. I think you probably, and we have tried to work with you from day one. There are no campsites near your property at all, I would be very surprised if you ever see your orders are impacted by the proposed development.
Feel free to stand on language.
But I think there are two separate issues, I guess is what I am saying, is that the, the campground, the Acadia Wilderness Lodge campground is one issue. And, and you are with this moratorium killing it and denying a family property rights and causing a lot of harm. Wanting to do a comprehensive planning process, stopping, talking, getting along, figuring out what matters to the town is incredible, and you should do it and you should start tomorrow. I wouldn't even wait for this moratorium vote to come in.
Anybody else have anything? Uh, yes.
Ms. Hopkins, um, I have to make an observation of saying that the campground's kinda been bringing in so much traffic. And to deal with that isn't Tremont, you need to go to the government because the people that are opposing this, most of them are from Hawaii, and they need to reach out to the government because they may, maybe didn't know that they were buying into Acadia National Park, which is the third most visited, the three main, and this is maybe showing on to Chukka Canyon or something. But you can't take, just because you're against it and playing without looking at traffic on this island isn't because of the campground, it's because of Acadia National Park. So, you know. Oh, you can argue what you want, it doesn't matter, because that's fact, look it up. But my father went on the planning board forty-five years ago because of this reason, because people who went to this, this town, they do what they want, they get on the boards, they vote against anything anybody local has to say, they just laugh and say, so I think, unfortunately, it's sad, but I'm glad I don't have to deal with these people anymore.
Um, yeah, you both, I'll say Stephen first and then Beck.
Yeah, and Steve was in Tremont resident, um, the, the petition that was more authority was signed by, I believe, twice the amount of people needed, all Tremont residents, so you know, I just, in a way, things are a little forgotten.
Beck.
I think, I think what you've all heard is how I feel, and I'm more emotional than most of you about this whole project because it is ours. But I think sometimes you just need to step back a little bit and say, "Sometimes I wish we hadn't stopped and listened to any of you or taken in any of your opinions" because it would've been passed, and the hundred fifty-five sites would've been in the backyard. But instead, we stopped, we stopped the whole project and we listened. I mean, we wouldn't even be dealing with this moratorium if we had just gone through the process and kept on going with the original campground, it would've all been passed by now.
That's quite an assumption.
Maybe, unless you wanted to get on the moratorium going, I guess at that point, but we passed.
It is quite an assumption to say that the hundred fifty-four site would've, would've passed.
Well, we, we had everything, we had got to all hoops, everything that was in the ordinance said. It's, is what's in the ordinance, and that's the only thing we could go by, is what was in the books. And when we did the first one and people thought that it was, they didn't like it, you should've bought the property behind us, I guess, if you wanted to stop it, but I don't know, I mean, it's, it's just one of those things that you think, you can keep trying to do the right thing, but I don't notice it matters anymore. At this point.
Yes.
My name is Greg Johnson, I have been working with the Hopkins family, um, with, um, their campground. I think the moratorium, um, one of the, it's a, it's an opportunity to plan, um, work with neighbors. Um, the opportunity to plan has existed, um, all throughout this process. The idea that the moratorium yanked Tremont is completely true. Because what you have is, um, on this same, same ballot, is ordinance changes which could have occurred. These, these, this site plan ordinance review went through public hearings. Um, the planning board brought up on June twenty-second, changes for campgrounds. They brought it again on July thirteenth, again on July twenty-seventh. So the planning process has been out there, it is there, that's why on this ballot, there are land use changes. So the idea that the moratorium, um, is, is, is part of the planning process, it will gauge it. If you had been entertaining the actual process, you could've been on the ballot. Those processes have happened every meeting in this town since last June. So I just wanna speak to what we have and say that it is what it is. It shank the, the road up on the thirty.
Um, Sheila Edison, um, Silco. Taking a pause doesn't mean killing the project, it means reviewing how the standard fits the projects going, all projects going forward. I'm here to support the moratorium, to allow the town some time, in this case, one hundred and eighty days, to review and adopt changes that better define what's acceptable to camp, in, in campground development in Tremont. That's critical right now, we are, we're at a real crossroads and we don't make use of what the community wants and reflect and, and, and listen to the feedback and pay attention to the rules and the laws for everybody. While the current land use ordinance requires more stringent definition and detailed clarity to meet the needs of Tremont's current development challenges, the goal should be to fully protect residents from inappropriate development while maintaining the naturally rural nature of the town with thoughtful and appropriate development. Please let the people decide.
Yes.
The other thing about the, um, moratorium, I think, so you can look at the ways which any kind of business can expand. For example, if and when this particular campground is approved. There are pieces of the campground that the last meeting talked about, for example, the store or the spa. So, um, how long can the store or how big can the store be? How many hours can it be open? How long does the season last? How much of the, how much of that can be, um, in business, right? I mean, there's a campground and then is it a year-round business? I mean, there's lots of pieces of that that could be thought through during the moratorium so that, I mean, there's one thing to have a business that's seasonal, it's another thing for it to be year-round. At one point, when the Hopkins proposed this, there was gonna be a Santa's Village, which is very different than a summer campground than if it were a year-round, um, constant, you know, theme park, right? So if we could have this time to pause and discuss what something like this could be, that would be also useful, you know, so that different definitions of businesses like commercial use could be defined so that when any property, not just this one, but any property is purchased, then all the different definitions could be thought about. Because it's, yes, I will concede that this particular event, the last campground they had approved, did make me start thinking about all the different properties that we have available on this island and all the questions that did pop up. Because this particular property brought up a lot of examples, like Santa's Village, this could start coming up all over the island, like walking paths, like spas, like stores, like all these different things. Is it only about this property? No, but there's certainly a lot of examples this property made me think about for the future that the moratorium could help us define for future properties. So is it only about this property? No, but did this property make me think of a lot of questions for other properties? Absolutely.
Is there any other comments?
I just wanna say, I, just observing and listening, it strikes me that, um, the Hopkins family is kind of, without realizing it was going to happen, been a catalyst for people really opening their eyes and starting, like, realizing the process. As, as someone who does a lot of reading and paying attention to what's going on in the island, but has actually not ever shown up at the meeting, sure, I have opinions about things, I think about things, I listen to what I'm having about things, but it, it seems to me, like, a lot of what I'm hearing is that this process, as it has unfolded, against the backdrop of everything else that's going on in the world right now, is, is, um, for better and for worse, I think, um, of an eye-opener and kind of a, a force for people suddenly thinking, like, wait a minute. This is, this has been going on, I mean, I'm guilty as, I'm guilty of not showing up to the discussions. I'm not in the butter, I'm a town, I, I live in the town, but I, it's not that has, it seems like it's made a lot of people start thinking more broadly about the, the island, the town, the future of the town going forward. And, and, anyway, just been off to a great.
All right, we ready to close this? All right, let's close. All right, let's close the public hearing for the, uh, twenty-twenty-one campground moratorium ordinance. At, whatever it is, six ninety-three.
Mr. Chairman, my services are.
Yes, I believe that is, okay, thank you. All right. Guys, ready?
Let's go.
Approval of minutes, we have the minutes from September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty, twenty.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, um, from September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, approval warrants, yes. Warrant thirty-three, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars. Thirty-four, nine thousand, three hundred, eighty dollars, seventy-nine cents. Thirty-five, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred, thirty-five dollars, one cent. Thirty-six, for nine thousand, two hundred, five dollars, seventy-eight cents. And thirty-seven, for fifty-five thousand, five hundred, sixty dollars. We're still in a, still in a meeting here, if everyone could please keep it down.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants thirty-three through thirty-seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, uh, committee appointments. Next, we have, um, one appointment for library trustees and one appointment for a comprehensive plan task. Okay. Can you please keep it down? We're still in a meeting? Yeah. All right.
I would like to make a motion to table the appointments, because we got a new application in, uh, I just saw it today, or tonight when we got here.
That's correct. It was dropped off, um, Friday afternoon, after packets had been prepared.
Yeah, I, I agree.
There's only one position open, Jesse, right?
On each, yeah.
Yeah, one for each board.
Any questions? I'm, I'll ask Jesse, but I'm pretty sure there's two seats available on the library. This is currently open.
Okay, well, what?
Well, I'll have, I would like to see if Jesse can confirm that. Is there a question on the library or the chair?
Oh, okay, um, is there two, the question was, is there two seats of, open on the, um, library?
Uh, yes, there's two on the library, one on the complex.
There's two seats.
Okay.
For another application?
Uh, yes, we just received a, another application.
Not for the library.
Yeah, it's both.
Both, yep.
Oh, yeah, missed that, sorry.
Yeah, I'm fine with what McKenzie said, it's just table it until next meeting. Um, this was last minute getting that application, um, and also maybe we'll have a full board then as well.
Okay, can we not accept the one?
Sorry, I couldn't.
Can we not accept the application? You have two applications for the library board. One came in, we just saw it tonight at five o'clock when we walked through the door. So that's why we want to wait and review the other person's application before we make any decisions. We're also missing a board member. Oh, so you can't accept the one that you've already looked at? I'd rather wait. So we can, I mean, this is brand-new to us. I mean, I, I haven't had time to read. I didn't know if you could accept the one that you've already looked at. I would like to wait and do it all together, but that's just, that's me. I think Howdy.
Howdy, seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table, um, the committee appointments, both for the library trustees and the comprehensive plan task force until next meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, regular business, we have salary ranges. Pretty straightforward, with just a few changes in there.
Yes, um, the only changes to this were the, um, part-time wages for the janitor and the, um, snowplow drivers that I talked about, um, in the secondary section.
Looks good to me.
Yep. I'll make a motion to adopt and sign order setting salary ranges for municipal employees and officials.
A second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt and sign the order setting salary ranges for municipal employees and officials. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, town office closure. I understand. There's a lot going on and trying to ju- juggle everything.
Yes, so we've, um, been going over the election, scheduled for election day, um, for the employees. And with Katie, um, being registrar voters, um, this election, uh, since Janet resigned from the position, she'll need, um, deputy registrars from upstairs to cover, because she'll have to be town clerk, warden, and resident.
Doesn't always happen that you have two meetings at the same time. Here we go, first one.
So, um, so the proposal would be that, um, I'll obviously be here and answering the phone upstairs, um, but to have the lobby closed to regulate town office business during elections.
I'm sure people will, will understand, that's for, that's for sure.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to close the business lobby of the town office on Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one, due to staffing the election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to close the business lobby of the town office on Tuesday, November second, twenty-twenty-one, due to staffing the election. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have a clock on Hillrest Cemetery.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sell lot C twenty-three in Hillrest Cemetery to Barry and Betty Archlies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to sell lot C twenty-three in Hillrest Cemetery to Barry and Betty Archlies. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, town managers are for.
Major emphasis in the last two weeks has been, um, budget prep for FY twenty-three. Public hearing prep for this public hearing, as well as planning board public hearings and work on the ballots and election prep. I, um, prepped for and attended two planning board meetings, lots of phone calls with attorneys and those involved with the planning board meetings. Did some research on recycling, met with the Versant, um, power rep, again, on the easement that you discussed at the last meeting. Spoke with Marine Patrol about the vast number of dead seagulls showing up around town. And met with the soils engineer at the small community grant project site to get that, um, project going. Met with Lisa at the library, submitted, uh, the workers' comp renewal for twenty-twenty-one. Scheduled a snowplow driver meeting, CEO permits and inspections, followed up with Tony Smith, um, on a spill from the hazardous waste day of the parking lot. Attended the League of Towns meeting, uh, did my check-in with McKenzie. Met with a resident from Cape Road about some concerns, um, in the neighborhood. Meeting prep for this meeting and attended the cover committee meeting. Office staff has been busy doing, um, conducting, we had a monthly staff meeting. Placing public notices, ballot preparations, election schedule, processing tax payment. Um, Public Works has been busy mowing town facilities and cemeteries, trash removal at the back beach. Um, took all of the town's hazardous waste materials to the hazardous waste day event, picked up parts for truck milling and then finished painting lines in the upper parking lot. The harbor master repaired hoist number two, worked on work permit, permits, included work parking lot diagram for the harbor committee meeting. Attended the harbor committee meeting, uh, remote camera access setup for the new cameras at the harbor master shack. Removed traps from the dock, picked up the new boat trailer, and did an under dock inspection, um, that revealed some cracking in the, um, under the dock that we continue to repair in the morning with Public Works. And over the next few weeks, I'm going to continue working on the FY twenty-three budget, more researching to the recycling programs. Uh, planning board public hearing coming up on October twelfth, and continuing carpet funding.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions of next meeting? Uh, date of the next meeting?
Uh, make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five o'clock P M, at town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, five P M, the town office. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Want to do the exam?
Yeah, second, all those in favor? Beat me, Harry.